Post pandemic libraries and the roaring 2020s. Dr. Annie Norman, the state librarian, and I'm delighted that you're here with us today. We're expecting well over 100 people, which is awesome. So I'm sure they'll be joining us. People will be coming and going throughout the morning. This is the 33rd Library Town Meeting. We hold these events about twice per year for planning and to gather your hot topics. The Institute of Museum and Library Services, or IMLS, is the federal agency for libraries. And Delaware receives about $1 million in federal funds annually, which is called LSTA, the Library Services and Technology Act funding. We're starting our five-year federal planning early because we're getting an additional $2.2 million in ARPA one-time funds. And so we want to spend it all wisely for library's best future. So let's, let's figure that out together. So this is the second Library Town Meeting that is entirely virtual. The December Virtual Library Town Meeting went well. And everybody cross your fingers that the technology will support us today, again today. And I want to thank Serena and all of the DDL staff for managing this. We find that it takes a village to produce these events, even virtually, even without the chocolate and the candy. But we hope you have some of that locally. So the agenda for today is we're expecting Secretary Jeff Bullock. Sherry, let me know if, if he comes in.
He is here. Is Chris.
Oh, that is Chris. Okay. And I was going to say Chris Knight is also joining us, the deputy from the Department of State as well. We'll hear from Secretary Bullock. And then we're going to do an icebreaker in breakout rooms. And then I'm going to give some of the background for planning, which will lead us into the keynote speakers. And that's Lowell and Stephanie. Our Lowell and Stephanie here, send me some messages. Let me know if speakers have arrived. And they are from the National Communities of Excellence 2026. Oh, I see Lowell now. Good morning. Hello. And then we're going to take a break. And then Martha Kalidu and Bill Wilson from Quality Metrics. They're going to lead us, they'll facilitate the breakouts to get your input for the LSTA planning. So also attending today are several of our consultants, our mentors and our leaders. I mentioned Chris Knight from Department of State. Also Peggy Geisler from PMG Consulting. She has been facilitating collective impact or Communities of Excellence Initiative. And also several of our COE partners will be here today. Also, the Every Library team. We are now working with Every Library Yay, which is a national organization in support of libraries. John Traska and his team. And John was a keynote for us for our Library Town Meeting in December 2016. So you may remember him from that. And also, of course, the Council on Libraries members. This is actually their meeting, their opportunity to get that input from you. So please put comments, ideas, rebuttals in the chat as we go through, through the morning, at least the first part of the morning. Keep your cameras on if you can, if you have them, and your microphones on mute. And the big discussion session will be after the keynotes. So we'll have lots of time for discussion then. So now I would like to introduce our huge library advocate, Secretary Jeff Bullock, who is the Secretary of State. And in fact, he is behind a majority of the library funding and successes that we'll be highlighting throughout the morning. So I'm so excited that he could be with us today. And Jeff, if you're ready, take it away.
Hey, thanks, Annie. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. So.
You're breaking up a little bit.
First of all, for by Zoom. Oh, sorry about that. I had to see if I got all my settings correct here and get on the Wi-Fi. That might help a little bit. But I would usually, I'd usually be there, at least by Zoom. But I had to be home this morning. So, so at any rate, you can, you can, you don't get to see my, my pretty face. You just get to hear, hear, hear my words. I hope that's, I hope that's adequate. And that, but thanks to everybody who's on the call. As Annie mentioned, I think we did one of these virtual town meetings late last year and seemed to go well. This may be our last because as we're beginning to pull out of the COVID, you know, we're doing more and more things live again. And so hopefully, when we see each other next, we'll see each other in person. I hope to, I hope to as well. So to say it's been an interesting year, both 2021 so far and, and 2020 would be, you know, gross underestimation of just how crazy it's all been. It has been crazy. And I'm just very, very happy that we're getting back to something that appears to be, it's close to normal or what we knew is normal. And as I said, hopefully, as the spring and summer progress, we'll continue, we'll continue to see that. I, I don't know what we're seeing in terms of participation in library services lately. I'm sure Annie's got all the numbers. But I gotta believe that things, you know, are on, are on the uptick. And I think, you know, the time is now to start getting the word out that, that we want people to come back and to utilize the services that we provide, even if it's virtually to you or, or over the internet. It's just important to remind people that we're out there and that, and that we are maybe a little bit differently than we were in the past. But we are, you know, that we're open for business and we're ready and we're ready to, to serve them. I think, you know, on the, on the budget front, it's been a little bit of a crazy year. We have a ton of money. But most of the money is not the kind of money that you want to build in your budget, you know, long term. So most of the money that we're trying to figure out what to do with will go for, you know, kind of one-time projects and the like. I think the libraries, and I think you mentioned the libraries are getting a chunk of some federal assistance, which is great. There probably will be opportunities for, probably will be more opportunities as we figure out what to do with, with the big slug of federal money that Delaware got from, from the last stimulus package. We were having a conversation about that with legislative leaders yesterday. And the good news is it is a lot of money. It's almost a billion dollars and then, and local governments got another, I don't know, less than 100, maybe 90 million or something like that. So altogether, it's quite a bit of money. The bad news is the federal government has been pretty slow in, in writing the rules and regulations around how the money can be used. And we'd hoped to know more than we do right now. But it looks like the way the process is working, the, the initial rules are out for comment. And, but it doesn't look like they'll be finalized, maybe for another 90 days or so. So that will take us, you know, well into the summer and maybe as late as, you know, mid to late September, early fall before, before we know exactly what we're doing. So it's a little bit, it's a little bit frustrating. But, but again, there's great opportunity there. The money, the federal money has to be spent now, has to be committed by the end of 2024 and has to be spent out by, I think, the end of 2026. So there is some time around that. But I'm sure that knowing some of these, the people that are on this call that I, as well as I do, I'm sure that there will be some very good ideas coming from our library community. It will just depend on what, you know, what qualifies for that, for that kind of, that kind of spending. So I usually kind of update you all where I think the, you know, where I think the kind of things are going to move legislatively. Because I think we're usually in Dover for this town hall. And you guys go over and visit legislators. Afterwards, that's obviously not going to happen this year. I think it will be a fairly quiet end to the legislative session. Some of, there, there is some activity back in legislative halls, you know, but not what we're used to in a, in a typical June. And it's just okay, I suppose. I think June 30th is going to be a virtual event, much as it was last year, and probably not in person. But as Chris and I were just talking in the meeting, in a call before this, we are going to be out of the governor's emergency order before too long. I think if things continue to progress, maybe as early as, as, as next month. Don't hold me to that. But I think that's a very real possibility now. It's a good thing. We shouldn't, we shouldn't, we've been living under the emergency powers of governor for 15, 16 months now. It's way too long, necessary, but way too long. And so I, I think we will probably likely be out of all that by, by sometime this summer, again, maybe as early as, as, as next month. So that will essentially, again, if things continue to improve, that will bring us back to kind of where we were in March of, of 2020. And so, you know, I don't know what that means exactly for your planning purposes. But you should just be aware that that's probably the next, the next, I guess, call it next phase. The next phase is not to be in a phase. How's that? And, and plan for that to, to happen sometime, sometime in September. So anyway, we're coming out of it. Things are getting back to normal. I hope your lives are getting somewhat back to normal. We in state government, including Annie and her team at the Division of Libraries, we, we're starting to bring people back to work and may accelerate that a little bit. So I think it's going to be, I hope it's going to be a very good summer for all of you and for all of us in the public sector. I very much appreciate the really, really difficult time that you all had during the pandemic. And, and I hope, I certainly hope never to repeat it. And, but I hope that we have turned, are turning that last corner to, to getting back to normal. So without any turnover to you, I don't know if you, if you want to open up to questions or the like. But I'm happy to take any questions folks might have. Or Annie, if you want to, if you want to ask questions, you can ask me questions anytime. But if you, you want to ask questions, certainly open to that. Or to Chris, Chris is, Chris Knight is on the line. I don't know if he's, I don't think he's zoomed in, but I think he might be there. So for either Chris or me.
Okay, so we do have, there is one question from Diana. She's asking whether you foresee an increase in the bond bill to cover the increased construction costs as a result of the pandemic. And I know that there's also questions about whether there'll be the $600,000 increase requested by council for the outdoor spaces.
Yeah, I think two good questions. I'm very worried about the inflationary cost, not just as it relates to libraries, but for all public sector construction projects. I think we are going to experience quite a bit of that over the next few years. And yeah, we're going to have to, we're going to have to, I don't think it's going to be reflected in this year's bond bill, but it's definitely going to have to be something that we, that we anticipate going forward. We've already had some, some discussions around it. Again, the good thing is, you know, we're, we're in a pretty good, we're in a pretty good position to be able to do that. So to the extent that we are able to identify those inflationary costs, which I don't know that we can right this minute. But as we begin to encounter them, you know, that they'll be good, they'll be good to know and to understand. In terms of the outdoor and, and to fund for, if not in this bond bill, then the opportunity that we have in January or, or later. In terms of the, the outdoor space stuff, I think the concept is a good one. I think it is something that we might be able to, to, to figure out in, in, in the context of the federal funding. It would seem to be perfect for something like that. We just need to see that these rules, what these rules end up being. These final rules end up being, and the initial set were not quite as flexible as, as we'd hoped for them to be. But certainly, the outdoor spacing would be something that has resulted from the pandemic. So it would, it would seem to fit into that category.
Good, that's, that's what we were hoping. That sounds great. Any other questions for, for Jeff? And we really appreciate your time and all of your advocacy for, for libraries on behalf of Delawareans, of course, certainly. And as I said, today will be about planning. So we'll come up with lots of, lots of ideas for you to spend that money.
That'd be great. All right, thanks, everybody. Have a great, have a great morning.
Thank you.
Hopefully, again, hopefully we'll see each other soon.
Great, thanks, Jeff.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to go into our icebreaker. Serena is going to perform her magic. And somehow she's going to whisk us away into breakout rooms where you can meet each other. And so what we're suggesting is that you go around, go around your little room and share your name, your library, and what you're currently reading. And I believe we're doing six minutes. So just make sure everyone has a chance to introduce themselves. And if there's time left over, then you can start talking about what your ideas and your needs are for the next five years. So your name, your library, what you're currently reading. And if you have time left over, start, start the brainstorming. And then Serena will whisk us back into this big room. And if you like, then, then anything interesting that came up, please share with everybody in chat. But wait till you come back to put it in chat so we can see it. So Serena, whenever you're ready. But we just finished reading the Vanishing Act. Okay, so people are coming back into the big room. We, we ran out of time. We were, we were cut off. It was a nice conversation. And while people are coming back, I just wanted to also thank our partners for being here. We're actually going to talk quite a bit about partnerships today. So I was, make sure that we acknowledge all the partners that are here as well. So thank you. So I hope it went well. And again, please, if there was anything interesting that came up, please share that in chat. All right, so now I am going to share my slides here. Oh, oh, thank you. Okay, Serena's doing it for me. Great, thank you. So I'm going to go kind of launch into some background here on post pandemic libraries and the roaring 2020s and what's next for libraries. So in December, we celebrated your pandemic pivots. And now we're celebrating the 120th anniversary for Delaware libraries. It's also the 15th anniversary of the Delaware library catalog. It's the 43rd Summer Library Reading Program. You know, things just, back one slide, Serena. And, you know, lots of, lots of milestones. And there have been many, many successes, many, many contributors. And we need to write a book. It's been a lot of turnover in the last week, last year from retirements. And the pandemic is causing a lot of people to change, change, change their lives in various ways, make new decisions. To set the stage for the LSTA planning, I'm going to give a quick, high-level recap of our progress. I'm skipping over the first 100 years and focusing on this century, the, the past 20 years, but specifically how we came to realize the significance of partnerships, which will lead into our keynote speakers and our planning for today. So, you know, sorry if I don't touch on your favorite thing that occurred in the last 20 years. We're going to have to write a book for that. So a version of this post pandemic presentation was shared with the Maryland Delaware Library Association Conference and also several friends groups this spring. Next slide, please, Serena. So once upon a time, around the turn of the century, we started with developing a library model, which is on the left, to test. And then the services that we developed are on the right. The question was, what do libraries do? And how do we do it? What business are we in? Library school, which I attended back in the 1990s, was very philosophical. And it didn't provide a model. But we need to know concretely what libraries do in order to get to outcomes. And IMLS was challenging us around the turn of the century to get to outcomes. At the bottom, Delaware libraries have built a powerful infrastructure of buildings and technology. We have more than doubled the library square footage. And the state now funds, thanks to Jeff, the seamless statewide library infrastructure. The next level up are collections. So our collections core, I thought so then, when we created the model. But now I'm not so sure. We got away from that. We got away from collections with job centers, maker labs, social innovation. But in the Carney administration, oh, now we're back to grade level reading. During the pandemic, there seemed to be a default focus on books. At the national level, they were doing the realm study, which led to local book quarantines. There were 17,000 books trapped in transit, which is a real physical challenge. And now, bringing back the Delaware Book Festival, I know is on a lot of your wish lists for today. So the library profession is very detailed and specified about collections. There's books management, cataloging, classification, but not so much about programs and partnerships. We continue to experiment with our partnerships. And it's a big theme for our next steps. Next slide, please. So this is another view. This is the latest draft of our strategy map. So there, there you can see that it's shaded in different colors. And the purple or the lavender ovals, that was the first five years. It started, it says 2008. I would say that it really started even before that, maybe around 2002. But there was a big focus on the capacity that I mentioned, the buildings and the technologies. And then for the next five years, the orange shaded, we were focused on staff development, training needs assessment, service standards, efficiencies. And then, and the most recent, the current past five years, which is the blue shaded, we were working on improving access, developing partnerships. And all the way to today, where, you know, the telehealth and the, and that sort of thing. So the green, which is highlighted, is what we're proposing. It's the draft going into the, to today, which is about building the social infrastructure on those, with those partnerships, the collective impact and equity. So don't worry about these organizers that I'm showing. We just need your ideas and we'll figure out where they go in these organizers. Whether your ideas are big or little, whether they're silly or profound, tell us, share them. Because even small, silly ideas can lead to really big things. And I'm going to get, I'll give you an example. So last week, in Peggy's collaboration webinar that she did for us, I believe it was Meigs from Dover, who mentioned Hoopla. And we were talking about marketing, I believe. Well, Peggy didn't know what Hoopla was, which of course is one of our ebook collections. It's a ebook platform. And she suggested hula hoops, hula hoopla as a way to promote the fact that we have this collection. And of course, I'm anticipating that you now will all want a truckload of hula hoops if you haven't already gone out and bought some. So it's a good solution now to have hula hoops when all this public has all this pent up energy, right? But I'm meeting with Hoopla next week. And I'm going to ask them if they can send us a truckload of hula hoops. So, you know, even silly ideas can be super helpful. So don't hold back. Yeah, so hula hoopla. And we'll gather your latest ideas in the breakout rooms later in a little bit. Next slide, please, Serena. Okay, Serena.
Wasn't that the next slide?
You're, you're good, you're good. I think there was a delay. All right, so how do we support the wide range and levels of needs and topics in our communities? Some people are in crisis and some just want today's best seller. And some people want to start a business or, or change the world. In the last century, for strategic planning, the Public Library Association suggested service responses. And I believe Bill Wilson and some others may have been involved with that. Libraries would choose one or two service responses. And if you know what I'm talking about, some of you who remember this, if you could please put your library's choices of service responses into the chat. Because I don't remember exactly what they were. But it was something about, something like popular reading. There were, were two of them. I mean, there was a whole list of service responses. And except for maybe Wilmington, who I think chose business, all the libraries chose the same two service responses. But if libraries are the heart of the community, one or two service responses are not sufficient or sustainable to support all the variety of public needs and demands. Across all libraries, we need to support all needs, which is our version of Maslow, Maslow's hierarchy of needs. We can only manage that if all libraries work together, which we've conquered with the public libraries. And we continue to develop that, of course. We're never done with anything. But we've done, we've come a real long way with the, with public libraries and the members of the Delaware Library Consortium. We still need to address that with school libraries. We do have a few in the consortium. But the, the major crisis that school libraries are in, their crisis affects all libraries. But the next step is also by working with partners more seamlessly as well. Next slide, please, Serena. So Kleinenberg also says that libraries are a key part of the social infrastructure. Libraries are second responders. Around the nation, libraries help people recover after disasters, hurricanes, 9/11, and now, of course, COVID. The Delaware partners include DHSS, Social Workers, Department of Labor Employment Specialist. We have some here from the hospitals today and much more. There was a lot of partner panic during, the partner panic during the pandemic because they couldn't get into the library buildings to help people. Around the turn of the century, libraries were fortunate to have a decade of support from the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. The focus was on technology, but they also funded advocacy training. It was through the Public Library Association, it was called Turning the Page. We attended this training in April 2008 in Annapolis during the recession. So how many of you attended? So how many of you attended? If you were in Annapolis in April 2008, put that in the chat. And of course, some of you will remember, we appeared, they, on the Ace of Cakes TV program. They brought in a fabulous cake that they made for us. But that's, but I digress. Again, silly ideas are great. The big takeaway from that training, and I was working with Kathy Graybill on this. We, you know, at the end of it, we were in our little groups to work on our takeaways to bring back to Delaware. The big takeaway for me was this statement. Public officials don't believe that libraries are involved enough in solving community issues. And that was just, you know, a real eye opener. We came back, we held a big open house in June. We sent out a media release, come partner with libraries. Well, agencies and nonprofits came out of the woodwork. And we've worked with a number of partners on several initiatives over the years. Throughout all these years, the cornerstone was a very active partners with server, partners sharing fundraising events, workshops, needs, et cetera. And we found that with libraries as a linchpin, organizations were connecting that don't normally work together. These crises highlight underlying issues about libraries and our communities. The libraries, you are all doing great things. These various great things are not evenly distributed. So now we're evolving for, going forward from this informal kind of scattershot approach to a more strategic and systematic approach to our partnership efforts. Next slide, please. So to obtain guidance and learn more about collective impact, which is American Libraries Association's future of libraries trend, in September, we signed on to the National Communities of Excellence, a collective impact effort based on the Baldridge framework. Communities of Excellence is a three-year program. We're in the fourth cohort, and we are the first libraries to be involved, even for literacy. And now, we're going to go to our keynotes. Serena, you can stop sharing, and let Stephanie go ahead and bring up her slides while I introduce them. So Lowell Cruz is the former and retired CEO of Heartland Health in St. Joseph, Missouri. Lowell came to St. Joseph in 1984, when the two existing community hospital boards had decided to come together and from Heartland Health to better serve the needs of the community and the broader regions surrounding St. Joseph. With Lowell leading the way, he helped create the organization that became Heartland Health and grew it into not just a major employer in the region, but also one of the top healthcare organizations in the United States. He describes the vision of the organization as, "Heartland Health and its service area will be the best and safest place in America to receive health care and live a healthy and productive life." As evidence of the organization's progress toward that vision, they were the 2009 recipient of both the Malcolm Baldridge National Quality Award, which is huge, and the Foster G. McGaw Prize for Excellence in Community Service. That one may be huge too. I'm not familiar with that one. Stephanie Norling has been Executive Director of Communities of Excellence 2026 since 2014. In this role, Stephanie has participated in the development of the Communities of Excellence criteria, adapted from the Baldridge Criteria for Performance Excellence, and launched a national learning collaborative of communities to support their use of the framework. She also serves as a learning collaborative faculty and mentors several of the 21 communities currently participating, including us. After graduating with a BA in Anthropology from Tufts University in 1999, Stephanie joined the Institute for Healthcare Improvement in Boston as a project coordinator. In 2001, Stephanie moved to San Diego, California, and this is the best part. She worked for 12 years at the San Diego Zoo and Safari Park, first in the operations department, and later taking a lead role in the elephant department. And in 2012, Stephanie graduated from the University of San Diego with a master's in business administration and a certificate in nonprofit management. Stephanie also participated as a national Baldridge examiner for three years. Welcome Lowell and Stephanie, and take it away.
Well, good morning, everyone. Can, can you hear me okay? All right. It is a pleasure to be here, and thank you for this great opportunity. I'm looking forward to today. So again, my name is Stephanie Norling, and with me is Lowell Cruz. And we are going to start off today with a little bit of background and the history that led to the formation of our organization. And then after that, I'm going to tell you how the Communities of Excellence framework helps communities improve performance. And then Lowell will close with some remarks about leadership competencies that make this effort successful. So with that, it is my pleasure to pass this over to Lowell to kick us off.
Lowell, good morning. Annie, excuse me. Thank you for inviting us to do this. I got a good group this morning, and I'll tell you, this is the first time we have worked with a library, library system, and obviously the first time that we've worked with an entire state. When we think about communities, we think about a community or a region of a state, what have you. But to work with an entire state is, it's a great experience for us, and we appreciate Annie and all of you for helping us think through how we can do more of this. So I appreciate that. So what I want to do is just keep in mind that I've, I've been a healthcare administrator all of my career, 45 years in that business, and retired about a dozen years ago to spend my time working on this Communities of Excellence initiative. So I come at things from a healthcare perspective, and I know you come at things from a library perspective, and that's our unique similarity, actually. The idea is that we all come at life from our perspective, what our work is, our family, our values, what have you. So to give you a little bit of sense about how we came to this, and along with our co-founder Rick Norling, who's also in the healthcare business. So he and I together had this thought about using the Baldridge framework for communities. But it, but it stems from, before I came to St. Joseph, between 1977 and 1984, I was the CEO of a healthcare system in Rochester, New York. And literally, before I even, there was a Baldridge program, and before I even understood the implication of this, I, I had a friend, Al, who worked for the Xerox Corporation. And I was fascinated by the work he was doing. He was in quality, he was in their quality program. He reported up through David Kearns, the chairman, and he was, talk about a sense of urgency. What he described to me was this notion of almost reinventing the organization. And he was constantly moving around the country, finding out what others were doing, what other successful companies were doing. And we would talk about that, and I kept thinking, well, could we apply some of what he's learning in manufacturing, and how to improve performance to healthcare? So that's what was kind of my interest. I had no idea at the time that I was talking with Al, that Xerox was close to turning the lights out, primarily because of the pressure they were getting from Japan, Germany, and others that were frankly outperforming in terms of cost and service, many American countries, by the way, which led to the original Baldridge framework. So I had this in the back of my mind about an organization trying to transform itself so they could survive. I didn't think anything more about it, moved to St. Joseph, Missouri in 1984, stayed in touch with my friend Al, and said they were making good progress. And in 1989, he called me to say, by the way, Baldridge received, we was one of the first to receive the Baldridge Award. Xerox was the first to see, receive the Baldridge Award. I go, well, great, what's that? And he told me a little bit about it, but again, I didn't think too much more about it. So to tell you a little bit about Heartland Health in St. Joseph. So it was two hospitals that came together. St. Joseph is a rather poor community, a low educational attainment, about 75% graduation rate from high schools, unemployment at around 10%. The entire region, for the most part, is rural, other than St. Joseph, and high, a lot of morbidity, mortality, a lot of chronic diseases, those kinds of things. The hospitals come, come together, a Methodist and a Catholic hospital to form Heartland Health. You could imagine, if those, if some of you have been involved in trying to merge schools or merge churches or whatever, it's a real difficult time. Well, these two organizations were used to competing with one another. And so that's kind of how they came into this. They weren't quite sure what they were getting. The boards had decided they needed to do it for the sake of the community and for the hospitals. So I come into St. Joseph to help build that organization. And frankly, my wife and I came back to St. Joseph, because I, we, I grew up on a farm in Iowa, not too far from St. Joseph. And my wife was from Columbus, Nebraska, so it was coming home for us. And so as we got into it, we realized that the hospital had no money. It's had very low performance in virtually every measure you could think about. And I mean, I thought we were in trouble. We were frankly, like many communities, we were frankly not performing at a level that was acceptable. And I tried everything, to be honest with you, in terms of how do we improve our leadership? How do we get the culture changed so we can work together? And so this went on for several years. The first five years I was there, we did start to make some improvements, a lot of work to get, get us to that point. So keep in mind, I'm in there in 84 and 89. I hear from Al that they received the Baldridge Award, didn't know what that was. In the early 90s, we're starting to settle down a bit. Got a little bit of money in the bank, and I'm beginning to realize that we're just not making the progress we need to make. We're still in the bottom quartile by every measure. And I knew we had to do something different, but I didn't know what it was. One of the ladies that worked for us in our organizational development function was working on our PhD at K, at K-State. And she had talked to her professor about our circumstance, and he suggested to her, why don't you go back and talk to Lowell and see whether or not you should bring in the Excellence in Missouri Foundation to help you rethink your organization? Well, when Robin came back to tell me that, I'm going. And she said, she, he recommended the Excellence in Missouri Foundation, which is basically the state's version of Baldridge. And when I heard the term Baldridge, and I realized my friend, they had reimagined Xerox and had gotten themselves back on their feet, and frankly, we're doing very well at that time. I thought bingo, this is what we need to do. So we brought the Excellence in Missouri Foundation to, to Heartland Health about 1993 or 94. And this was before there was any Heartland Health, or there was any framework for healthcare organizations. And we began having them come in, reimagining the entire way we led the organization, how we created a new culture of high expectation performance, how we built the tools. Because ultimately, our moral obligation is to do the best thing we can for our patients. Everyone that comes to the door will eyes on us. And as most hospitals in America will say, our job is to take care of our patients, but it's also to take care of the community, improve the health of a community. But we had no idea how to improve the health of the community, other than taking care of patients. And so we're trying to figure all of that out. And so in our, in our thought about why we will use Baldridge, and we've actually asked the board to adopt the Baldridge framework as our management model, management governance model. And so I'm thinking we started that maybe in 94, 95. We, we took our, our foundation that had been designed to raise money for the organization and converted, converted it into a Healthy Communities Initiative, because we knew that we needed to figure out, how do we get engaged in the community in a different way? Much like you're doing, building partnerships with the school system and the business community and city government and county governments and what have you, because a hospital can't do that by itself. Just like libraries can improve literacy by itself. We need everybody. This is an all in, all hands on deck strategy, proving healthcare, improving literacy, very much the same. So we were all in on this, starting in about, I would say, 95. By 2000, we received our state, our first state gold award from the state organization, which implied great progress in terms of proving, of improving our performance. And I noticed substantial improvement in quality, customer satisfaction, financial performance was improving. And I thought, well, you know, this is pretty good stuff. We just kept working on this. Five years later, we received another gold award from the state, in terms of the state quality organization. Again, we continued to see all the improvements. By 2009, the year I retired, we received the Baldridge Award. And by this time, Heartland Health had gone from the bottom quartile to the top 1% of hospitals in the United States until, in terms of all of our performance indicators. It was an amazing, as we say, 15-year overnight success. But it was basically every year we saw improvement. Every year, our culture got better in terms of creating a culture of quality and excellence. The dilemma for me and many other healthcare administrators around the country was that no matter what we did, we weren't improving the health of the country. And how, and how we engage in the community. And so when, when Rick and I both retired, Rick was president of premier, large national organization. He also received the Baldridge Award in 2006. So we were both all in on this Baldridge Performance Excellence idea. So Rick and I met with a couple other people in January of 2010 and said, what can we do in retirement that might help on this issue of community engagement, community leadership from a healthcare perspective? And he suggested that evening, what if we took the Baldridge framework that's worked so well for the healthcare organizations that we were running, and applied that to community? Could we develop a framework using that foundation of Baldridge to create a community? And so that's really what Communities of Excellence is about, is trying to figure out how do we improve the performance of communities? We know, we know for sure that in order for this country to continue to grow, for states to grow, we have to improve the performance of communities. We have to improve the performance. That's all that's left for us. We're kind of built on a foundation, this republic foundation of democracy, to get all of the things we need out of it. We have to improve the performance of communities. That's where basically everything happens in America is in communities. So that's what we want to talk to you about, and Stephanie's gonna kind of take you through how this idea has evolved, and then, and where we're at today, and then we'll come back and talk about it at the end. Steph?
All right. Well, thank you, Lowell. And so as I think Lowell has, has alluded to earlier on in the conversation, you know, we're all familiar with many of these challenges that our communities are facing and the urgency of these issues, as well as the interconnectivity and interdependence of all of these. So we know that none of this exists in isolation. And we also know that improving our communities requires investments of all kinds. And there are no shortage of investments by public and private entities, or shortage of frameworks and initiatives that exist to address our problems, or tools for collaboration and community leadership, for data collection and decision making. And, you know, all of these tools are important. They, we all, we need all of them, and it's really critical work that we're doing. But we can observe, I think, that despite all of this, we simply aren't making the kind of progress that we need to enable all of our residents in this country to thrive. And the simple fact is that these tools, projects, programs just aren't enough on their own. And we believe that one of the reasons that our problems continue to exist is because of a lack of connection between all of these different investments. And that one of the key missing pieces is that there's no systematic approach that's used by and familiar to all entities within communities that ensures that federal, state, local, and private sector efforts are aligned and integrated to maximize their benefit and their impact. However, as Lowell referenced, a systematic approach does exist for organizations and businesses in all sectors of our economy, and that's the Baldridge framework. Both of our co-founders knew the power of this framework to transform their organizations and align and integrate their operations to the needs of their customers and their workforce to produce sustainable results. And it was building off of that, that they developed this belief that this Baldridge framework, which we know can drive performance excellence in companies and organizations, could be adapted to drive performance excellence in communities, to align and integrate the many efforts across a community with the needs of the residents and organizations within to, to drive this kind of system-wide high performance that we believe residents will need to thrive. So let me just take a minute to talk a little bit about Baldridge and why we believe that this framework holds so much potential. So first, starting out with a little history. The, the Baldridge Performance Excellence Program was founded in 1987. This gentleman you see here on the right is Malcolm Baldridge. He was the Secretary of Commerce under Ronald Reagan in the 80s. And the Baldridge Program was founded in response to, to a crisis in the 80s, which was our, our sort of loss in competition to the Japanese and other countries in manufacturing. And so there was a sense of urgency at the time that they needed to take on, try something new. And so it was founded to improve US quality, productivity, and competitiveness, first in manufacturing, but then spread to six sectors of the economy. So education, health, manufacturing, small business. I'm gonna forget a couple of service, but they're all there. Today, it's used by thousands of organizations across the United States. And what's unique about it, it's a public-private part- And what's unique about it, it's a public-private partnership. So it is managed by the National Institute of Standards and Technology, which is a department and agency in commerce. And just to give you a sense of the scope of the program now, actually, I think this is up to one hundred and thirty five national awards, such as what Lowell referenced it to Heartland Health receive that have been given since nineteen eighty seven. And there is over thirty state and regional programs that administer over two thousand state or regional awards per year. And it's actually one of the international standards of performance excellence, as there are eighty national programs around the world that are modeled after the Baldrich Program. So the program itself has three purposes. The first one we've talked about to improve quality, productivity, and competitiveness in the United States. The second is to establish a nationally recognized standard of organizational and soon community performance excellence and quality. And the third is to establish role models of that standard through the Malcolm Baldrich National Quality Award. And so when Lowell had referred to this national award, what we're doing right now to add community as another sector or another category to receive this national award actually takes an act of Congress Congress, and that's something that we're pursuing right now. So the communities can apply and be recognized and receive this national quality award for community performance excellence. And that's something that we believe will be coming in the next couple of years. It does take time. So what the Baldrich Framework does, it it helps you look at all parts of your organization and manage them as a unified whole. The criteria is a set of questions. It identifies strengths, gaps in performance, opportunities to improve. And these questions help lead you to best practices and your desired results as an organization. So the questions are not prescriptive. They don't tell you how to run your organization. It's a management model that can lead to a strong organizational culture of sharing and benchmarking and continuous improvement of ethical leadership, all towards a pursuit of excellence and world-class results. And we know it works in organizations. We know it works in organizations that are as small as six or eight employees, all the way up to thousands of employees. We know it helps you to evaluate performance, assess where you need improvements. There's a focus on evidence-based decision-making and using data to drive your work forward. There's a focus on the needs of your customers. And the the point is not just to improve, but to pursue excellence, to be the best that you can be. So looking at this diagram on the left here, you can see there's three categories on the left, leadership, strategy, and customers. We think of this as sort of a leadership triad. You can, some of you can think about this as doing the right thing within your organization. And on the right, you see we have workforce, operations, and results. This is sort of the management side and and you can kind of talk about is doing things right. So really, and then underlying this is measurement, knowledge, management, analysis, and then underpinning the entire framework are core values and concepts that can be found within a high-performing organization. So so I like to think of this very simply put as doing the right thing and then doing those things right. And that's to me what sort of sort of very potently simply powerful about this framework. So if you think about how this could work in communities, there are some key factors first to take into account that are different. But we know that Baldrich is a systems framework. And in communities, we know that our educational attainment, economic vitality, health status, safety, and everything else, among others, are inextricably interwoven like a complex system. We also know, though, that community leadership is not hierarchical. It's not like in an organization. It requires a commitment among leaders across all sectors and generations. And no matter what sector you represent, no matter what organization you come from, or you how you're represented in your community, everyone matters. And so that's a really critical piece of the Communities of Excellence Framework that sets it aside from the organizational framework. But taking this into account, here is what the framework looks like in a community setting for community applying this across organizations and entities in a community. So now, answering the questions in the Communities of Excellence Framework will help you and the leaders in your community collaborate more effectively, align people, plans, and resources, identify strengths and opportunities for improvement, expand communication and effectiveness of programs, evaluate progress to achieve strategic goals. So the criteria being non-prescriptive, they don't tell you how to run your community. But they do help you determine the best tools to address your unique issues and provide a roadmap to focus and guide collective efforts forward. A critical component of Baldrich is the ability to learn from others by seeking out and sharing best practices and benchmarking world-class results. So with Communities of Excellence, the way that this currently happens is through our National Learning Collaborative, which I'll talk about in a moment. And the communities involved that share so generously and were able to learn from each other's successes and challenges. So to sort of summarize that the high points here about the Communities of Excellence Framework, it's really about uniting leadership at all levels towards shared goals, aligning the efforts in different sectors of your community so that they work together in a unified, mutually beneficial manner, managing all the different parts of your community as a whole, and ensuring that plans, processes, measures, and actions are consistent. And I think that if we look at this diagram, which is one of my favorites, this is adapted from Baldrich. Many of us can identify somewhere on the left side. I know that I when I think about my community, we do. And we may come together for certain projects or goals. But sometimes it feels like we're often moving in different directions. And so in the end, our vision for communities is that the organizations within are working towards coordinated goals for our residents that are individual and our shared activities are integrated and that we're maximizing the impact for everyone. And regardless of what priority is placed in the center here, everyone plays a part in making it happen. It might be directly or in a role of influence, but it's interdependent on all of these people in some way, shape, or form. So the mission of Communities of Excellence, twenty twenty six, our organization, is to improve the quality of life for our nation's residents by assisting communities and implementing the Baldrich-based Communities of Excellence Framework. We are certainly not alone in our efforts to improve quality of life. That's why we're all here, right? We're all here to to help our residents, help people thrive. And so here are five things that I I feel make this this program unique and and that I make it, I'm so passionate about and why we do this work. First, it is a journey. It's a journey of transformation. Journeys take time. And Lowell talked about a fifteen-year overnight success, and that's probably even more so in communities. Change moves at the speed of trust. Collaborative leadership requires trust. It requires shared decision-making. It requires lots of communication. And that does not happen overnight, does not happen immediately. This is a systems-based approach. So it's not just about projects. It's about the big picture. It's about big opportunities and interconnected actions. It also requires multiple voices. It requires the public, private, nonprofit sectors. This is not competitive or political. It's really about just maximizing opportunities and aligning and integrating our existing resources. And then finally, and I think we're used to or a lot or want to be in these courses or efforts where you want them to tell you the answers. And this program is not going to, we are not going to tell you the answers, but we are going to empower leaders such as you to ask the right questions at the right times to get the right answers. And just now, I think that if you ask the best questions, you get the best answers, you make the best decisions, and you take the best actions. And that is really what this is about. So what does this journey look like in a community? I'm going to try to give you a little bit of a sense of of what this process looks like. It starts here on the left with knowing your current story. So looking within your community at the elements, the interconnections of the wider purposes of the systems that exist. The Communities of Excellence Framework will help your communities assess performance, leadership, areas most in need of measurable improvement with innovation, with a particular focus on education, employment, health, and safety and quality of life. And next, we help to envision a future story. And this means understanding and trusting the data to guide decision-making and determining a shared vision and priorities. This framework guides dynamic dialogue through a common language that harnesses the best of your community's collective past, respects the people today, and responsibly pursues opportunities for improving tomorrow. And then next, it's taking action to create a new story. Investing the time and resources to learn and shift habits that when combined are the continuously improving system of how we do things around here in communities of a culture. And the framework supports community residents and their leaders in developing and empowering their skills, knowledge, and leadership, so that continuous improvement becomes internalized, sustainable, and ingrained in the community's culture. So the way that we do that is we help communities through our National Learning Collaborative. We bring in six communities at a time in cohorts. And they go through a three-year curriculum to support their community excellence journeys. In the first year, we help communities develop or improve a leadership structure and system for leading, communicating, and making decisions that represents the community. These leaders learn together, develop a community profile, and share vision that help bring people to the table to agree on and develop a shared definition of your community, of its requirements, its successes, and its challenges. A profile really helps leaders to be thinking about and seeing the community in the same way and begin communicating using the common language. That helps you know your current story and begin to envision a future story together. So moving into year two, we continue to see, use this framework to strengthen and grow the leadership system and implement collaborative strategic action plans together. To use the vision of a future story to take action and create a new story essentially. And so in year three, the focus is on analyzing for improvement, further aligning efforts, and accelerating progress. So our goal for is to provide communities with the knowledge and the skills and the confidence to continue this work sustainably for years to come so that we are continuously seeing, believing, and doing. So this is a map of the current communities that are involved in Communities of Excellence. This represents twenty-one communities across the United States. I think it's twelve states and a collective population of almost ten million. Delaware, as Lowell said, is the first state to take this work on on behalf of their residents, of your residents. And you are the first backbone organization, so facilitating organization that steps up to do this work on on behalf of their community. That is, as a library department or represents libraries. And so we are thrilled to have you involved in this work. Many in many of these communities, you'll see a variety of backbone organizations that support this, whether it's through healthcare, foundations, education, economic development. It's really, but what brings them all together is that these are organizations or groups of organizations that have chosen to take the next step in supporting their community to help really make their communities thrive and be a place where generations flourish, you know, for for a long time to come. And so I applaud you on your efforts, and I'm really thrilled to be working with your community. So with that, I'm going to pass this over to Lowell Cruz, who's going to make some closing remarks.
Okay, thanks, Steph. One thing that we've learned about communities. It's not like in your organization where you can actually select, hire the people that run your libraries or run your divisions, whatever company or organization you're with. Basically, communities are run by the people who show up. And the thing that's common about them is that they generally come to that to as a person with a motive to help improve the community. They have a sense of urgency about things. Some some people are elected. And they show up because of their job. But the point is that it's not like in an organization where everyone has to pass through some kind of an interview process and you see whether or not they have the competencies to do whatever the job is. It's just people who show up and want to help. Where the commonalities go away is that they they don't speak the same language. That what's is an interesting thing. They they have a passion for their community, or we hope they do. But some come from the social service sector, from the business sector, from health, from government, education, all with different language, all with different philosophies on how to run your organization. And so and again, there's no CEO in a community. And so you have to figure out a way, each community has to take its senior leadership. In a state, you would do it, obviously, at the the senior leadership of state government plus the senior leadership of the education sector, business sectors, social service sectors, what have you, to kind of fulfill that role of a CEO. And it takes support from a backbone organization, a lot of mentoring and coaching to make that work. But in order for communities to work, they have to have that kind of collegiality and and a desire to work together. So this notion of creating a culture of excellence. You know, it's everyone's got in in their mind what excellence means. For an organization like it was with us in St. Joseph at Heartland. In the beginning, it's aspirational, a frame of mind. Can you imagine an organization like Heartland in the lowest quartile of every measure? Basically saying our vision is to be the best and safest place in America to receive healthcare? I mean, a lot of people in our organization go, what are we thinking? But you have to have somebody, like Annie or others, to basically say, we want to be the best. And I have learned, if nothing else, in being with the people in Delaware, you want to be first. You are first in everything. You're first. And we're beginning to believe it. And you are the first library system that we've ever worked with, as Steph said. I'm learning a lot and very appreciative of this experience. So this notion about being all you can be, it really is. I know that there's so many things that each of you want to do to be better at, whether it's golf or sewing or you name it. We all want to be better. And this notion of continuous improvements of forever journey. I've told you that our overnight success took us fifteen years. A lot of time leading up to that to get started. And then it then you got to make sure that the next generation of leaders continues that work. Requires a lot of preparation, perseverance. You got to build the capacity to lead. Imagine bringing together two hospitals who had different cultures. And now we got to bring together the trust, the ability to lead the organization. And the one thing about Heartland going from the lowest quartile to the top one percent. It basically, it was the same people that were there running it when we were in the lowest quartiles, when we were in the top of the organization. So it's just a matter of learning a different way to lead. It's very important. So this notion of a culture of excellence, really, it's an all-in strategy where everybody believes we've got to be the best and and you become very inspired by the kinds of improvements. You celebrate improvements all along the way. And I just mentioned this notion of intergenerational involvement. You've got a the existing generation has to bring along the new generation, whether it's clinicians or doctors or librarians, the the older generation brings along the younger generation. And in communities, we have to figure out how do you bring the 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 new generation of leaders along to believe and think in a certain way. Every organization has a culture. Every organization has a system for decision-making. And every system is perfectly designed to get the results that you want. Every system that you have is perfectly designed to get the results that you get. If you're not satisfied with your results in Delaware, in any category, health status, educational attainment, literacy. You look at it from a systems perspective. Ultimately, the formula that we kind of think about to create this passion for excellence is governance times leadership. Governance, they're the deciders on where we're going at a high level. Leadership is the multiplier. Usually, a board or a leadership structure hires the leadership or appoints a library system as the backbone organization for this. Leadership is the multiplier. Over time, following a set of values, taking your time. It's governance times leadership over values and time. That equals culture. Ultimately, community performance excellence is about culture, the way we do things, strategy, and execution. We always say culture, each strategy for lunch. Well, you know what? Culture plus strategy plus execution equals the results that we're all after. So we got to focus on execution as well. Next slide, Steph. So at the end of the day, really what you're talking about is creating a culture of excellence throughout the state of Delaware. Your, I would come at it from a how do we improve the health of our community? You come at it from how do we improve the literacy of the of the state and as foundational. And I will tell you this from a healthcare executive's perspective. We learned a long time ago, the foundation of improving the health of a population is educational attainment. It's not the quality of the hospital. Educational attainment, the quality of jobs, safe housing. Those are the things that improve health. And as a hospital leader, it became clear to us and Rick and many others, we've got to engage the community and all these sectors to build that culture of collaboration. Our governance at the leader at a community and leadership at a community level has to focus on these values of excellence and collaboration and partnerships, these things that Annie was talking about this morning. And you and you have to develop a passion for excellence. We're all passionate about some. From a jobs perspective and improving Delaware. From a jobs perspective and improving Delaware, this passion for excellence will go a long way. And I can't, I can't over emphasize, it's a long-term commitment. You will see improvements year over year, but to get to that goal of being the best, it takes a while. I look at it from the standpoint of this is advanced citizenship. This country can't exist without an educated population and within, without an engaged citizenry. Working on this kind of stuff over the long term is advanced citizenship. And through it all, we have to create this sense of urgency of how important this work is to make sure that we're, we do everything we can to help improve our community or our state as you're doing. So Steph, do we have another slide? Ah, we do. Thank you. So anyway, that's our story and I know that Annie would like to have some discussion. We're glad to answer questions. Let's do that.
Great. That was wonderful. Perfect. Thank you so much Lowell and Stephanie. I'm looking through the chat to see what the questions were. Judy, who is one of our Council on Libraries members, was asking, how do you actually measure success? That is data-driven, which is what elected officials require for funding. Can you give some examples from, from your own scorecard? Or from some of the communities that you're working with?
Sure. I can start off and Lowell, you can just add in. So you know, ultimately what, what you measure success by is whatever your community determines first as your vision for your community's future. And then, you know, the whatever it is, like whatever dashboard that community develops around educational attainment, health status, economic vitality and safety, or you know, whatever's really critical to that community's performance and success. But those are of course very long-term measures. So underneath that, you know, we, we help communities articulate sort of those desired strategies that are going to get there. Whether, for instance, it's around improving affordable, access to affordable housing. In other communities, it's around, you know, workforce development and workforce readiness or reducing chronic disease through smoking cessation efforts. Or whatever it is that those articulated strategies are that are cascading down from what these ultimate long-term desires are. So where we're at with communities of excellence is in the very early years, so in the first year or two, what you're going to start seeing is, is more kind of process results around improved collaboration, more effectiveness around small programs and small projects. Better communication that might result in quicker responses. It's more those kind of process results. And then in the, this sort of next couple of years, you start, you start seeing those results around, let's say, those efforts that I just mentioned. So more workforce preparedness or access to the jobs that are, you know, that are available in that community. In, in, for instance, I did, I referred to the smoking cessation. So there were, you know, efforts to change policies within cities, improve educational opportunities. More of those, those kind of activity measures that are then slowly starting to lead to, you know, reduce rates of smoking, which then in the long term we'll start seeing, hopefully, reduce chronic disease. So, so that's kind of an example of how we measure success. I think in the early years, it begins with improved collaboration, communication, those, those kind of critical pieces, alignment that you need to then get to the projects and the activities that then influence the processes and eventually the systems that we have. Without sort of pulling up and using a lot of the data that I have, I think that's the best examples that I can give right now.
Well, and Lowell, you were saying you went from the bottom quartile to the top. What were those numbers? What were they?
Well, I, I don't remember the numbers. That was like 35 years ago.
No, but I mean, what was, what was the, what was it measuring?
Oh, measuring financial performance, return, you know, operating bottom line, how much days cash we had. Quality from a standpoint of infection rates, return to the operating room, all, you know, any measure that you would have in a hospital that, and, and there is a database, a national database on that. So that you, I mean, everything now in hospitals is measured and compared. And at that time, we, it was, it was very crude. But we were looking at hospitals around, I knew from working with hospitals in Minneapolis for a dozen years and then Rochester, that our numbers were not good. And I kept trying to figure out why we were so low in all these categories. When you have less than one day's cash in the bank, you don't need a balanced scorecard. You know, you're out of money. And so you've got to do something. And so that's where we started. But I will tell you, at a community level, when I came to St. Joseph, our graduation rate from high school was 75%. You can imagine the implication of that for terms of how many people in our region had degrees beyond high school. And the United Way started a profit in education initiative in partnership with school system and the business community using, using this Baltridge framework. And actually, by the way, received a state quality award for their work. But by the, I think within the last three to five years, our high school graduation got around 90. So if you go from over that period of time, and it required a tremendous partnership between the business community and, and the United Way. And there was unwavering support for that. Our unemployment was at 10%. By the time we got into improving educational attainment and improving workforce, we saw unemployment or rate go down to below 5%, maybe like 3.5%. So we are in the process, you're going to build a balanced scorecard for your state. You would look at educational attainment by every category that you decide to measure in your state, whether it's entering kindergarten, ready to learn, high school graduation, percent of the population with a degree beyond high school, whatever it is. In healthcare, we've got the Wisconsin database now that tracks every county in America in terms of health status by all these chronic diseases, mental health, whatever it is. So as a country, we're much better at keeping data. Where we're not so good at the community level is taking that data, converting it into useful discussion and being able to tell stories that help people improve what they're doing. So there's a lot of work to do on data. But I will tell you, my own, my own belief is that when you looked at that Baltridge framework, category one was leadership. Category four was that under, underlining that foundational data system, data management. Without the data, you can't really track anything. You can't make decisions without the leadership that understands how to use data and ask the right questions. The data isn't any good to you. But data and leadership are foundational to making everything else work. So the measurements, as Steph said, process measures, all the things we're doing. I will tell you, when Xerox invested $100 million to re-educate, reorient their entire workforce and how to use these new processes and systems, that's a process measure. That's a process measure. It tells you how many people went through the system, how many of your managers have these competencies. We did the same thing at Hartland, not 100 million, I can assure you, but in proportion to our size organization. So you need to look at, what are the first things first? First is a commitment to do it. Second is a commitment to build your capacity to do it. And then have the patience, the leadership to guide you over the long term. Because you're still going to run the organization every day. You're still going to do a lot of good things. You're going to want to get it better. Doing this, thinking about going back and, and rethinking how we can reimagine Delaware. It's like going back to college. You're working. You got a good job and you would improve yourself. You go back and learn while you're working. It's that kind of thing. So yeah, you can measure whatever your group decides is the most important thing. And the good news is you've got comparative data from every state in the country almost. You just got to be able to use it.
Right. So now Judy's asking how, how it's going to assist libraries. Okay, so here's what we're, I'll tell you briefly what we're planning and Peggy, I know Peggy's here, she might want to jump in. But we've started our Delaware Communities of Excellence with Lowell and Stephanie's assistance. As I mentioned, Peggy is facilitating us. We're aligning it with collective impact. But we're starting with literacy because frankly, that's what we know the best and we have data around that. And we're going to create a literacy dashboard. And we were also working with literacy Delaware. So we're really looking at developing a dashboard from birth up, up through adult. And we have a lot of numbers for that from our library statistics. And so we're, and also kids count is helping us. So it's really nice to have data experts who are assisting us. And Bill and Martha from Quality Metrics will be assisting us as well. So we're starting with a literacy dashboard, but as, as Lowell mentioned, it's more about, you know, the entire health, you know, everything about the community. So that's the foundation and then we'll, we'll build upon that. I mean, I'm really it's, it would be helpful if the state had a dashboard. The state does not have one. Some communities, you know, around the nation do, but Delaware doesn't yet. I think they will at some point. For a while there, the Delaware Community Foundation, or I would say briefly, had one. And then it went away with the, with the new director, there's a new CEO. But I'm hoping that our efforts will show the value of, of a dashboard and will help the state to, to build on the work that, that we do. But you have to start somewhere. Susan's asking what the components of the dashboard are. Well, we're still working on that. We haven't pulled it together, but as I say, kids count, I think it's going to help us with some of that. And we did work with Compass Red, which is a data company. They did a, they did a sprint with us to do a mock-up of a dashboard. And it had things like number of library cards, the circulation, you know, and the, and those numbers by various age groupings. But we also want to pull in partners of like Read Aloud and other community organizations that are contributing to this objective as well. Does, do any? Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
A little bit on that. So literacy was chosen, I think, because Lowell had talked about earlier that the underpinnings of our society really are educational attainment, right? And no one can attain an education without being literate. And part of that is, is how do we create the environment so that all equity occurs for any of our citizens in Delaware to be able to attain that level of literacy so that they can move forward? There's a lot of studies that say it's higher level education that actually aligns and training and trades with economic mobility. With regards to a dashboard and literacy, we have pieces across the state that tells us how we're doing. Entering school, ready to learn, third grade reading level, graduation rates, the tape on where you are for an adult literacy level, digital literacy. We have numbers. We've never pulled it to all together. And then how do those numbers then let you as community agencies, libraries and partners align? Because then you can look at that data and say, what am I working towards on that dashboard? If I'm in Read Aloud, or I'm a library, or I'm a Boys and Girls Club. Am I working towards that third grade reading level? Am I working towards adult literacy? These are the indicators that I will contribute to that load on that dashboard. So the dashboard allows us across the state to see where we can align. Part of it is, is knowing what we're all working towards, our North Star. Knowing exactly where we fit in that equation and then giving us at least something to respond to. And so that's where we're starting. This is an evolutionary. And we'll start, we'll be looking at health literacy, we'll be looking at digital literacy, we'll be looking at financial literacy. But right now, we're starting with the basic core infrastructure. And we need everybody else to be willing to be thinking about that, coming around the table and seeing just in your thoughts right now, where do I kind of fit? Where would I fit? What would that look like? How would I be passionate about this? You know, do I want to just do something from a community level, a state level? Where do I have influence? And I think that's our big call to action right now when we talk about this. And I really appreciate Stephanie and Lowell for setting that groundwork and for Annie to be a leader who is transforming this initiative from a statewide perspective. So thanks for letting me chime in, Dr. Norman.
Well, thank you. And I can't do it without all of you, and all of you here. And that's why we're presenting about this. And I mentioned early on about the specific specificity. Specific, we need to get specific when we do this. And I think literacy is something that it will be the easiest for libraries to start with, to get specific around. And this was something that Peggy said in one of her webinars, you know, we all support literacy every day, year round. But how can we look at what we're doing together? Just like you all came together around, let's charge the same amount of fines or, you know, let's have the same circulation loan period. We need to be looking at what we're doing about literacy and, and align that so that we can really see the effectiveness of it. So anyway, so the point is that you can all be in, will need you to be involved more. And you can be involved more in the, in the development of this. So anyway, we are making good time here. If there aren't any more specific questions, plus we can take more questions when we go into the breakout rooms. But first, we all need a break. How about a, a good break before we come back? When, when we come back from break, then, then Martha and Bill will take over and they will explain what's going to happen when we go to the breakout rooms. And again, we hope technology will be with us, but if nothing else, you can always email me with your ideas. But hopefully we'll be able to capture, capture everything in the breakout rooms today. So let's take a break. How long do we want? I have 10:32. Do we want to go to 10:40? We'll all come back at 10:40 and then the, we'll hear from Martha and Bill. So thank you very much Lowell and Stephanie, and hopefully you can stay with us. But if not, thank you very much for your presentation. And I'll see you all at 10:40.
Thank you.
We're back. Okay, Martha, Bill, are you ready?
Eddie, are we ready? Did we have enough coffee? Here we are. We are ready.
Take it away.
Thank you so much. It's a delight to be here with all of you. With all the staff from the Delaware Division of Libraries, who helped us organize this 100 and, you know, some people here. I'm Martha Curie-Lidu from the Library Consulting Company, Quality Metrics. It's a company I incorporated in Maryland, just a neighbor here. And I want to ask also my two associates to introduce themselves. Bill, you'd know Bill, many of you know Bill, Bill Wilson.
Glad to be here with you.
It's the fourth round of LSD evaluations you're involved.
Yeah, started working with Delaware back in, I think, 2001 or two, something like that.
Yeah.
LSD evaluations for, and LSD plans for quite a number of years.
Excellent. And I am going to also ask our intern Erica Fitzpatrick to introduce herself. Erica?
Hey, I'm Erica. Like Mark said, I'm at Quality Metrics. Nice to meet you all.
Yeah, and I do actually have a set of slides that I'm going to flip to. There we are on our greetings. So I, I want to highlight the openings, highlight how difficult this past year was. And having Erica in Quality Metrics was an unexpected blessing for our consulting company. I never thought as a library consultant, I was going to have a library intern. Erica, I wanted to work in a public library and public libraries stopped taking interns this past year because they were not open for a good part of the, of the year. But it gave the opportunity to us to work with Erica and to work on some of our public library projects, which we're making progress despite the many obstacles. And I do want to remind everybody how much progress we have all made this past year in learning how to cope with unexpected situations. So all the best plans we were putting there are, you know, are for us to use for the next 10 years. But at the end of the day, be ready for unexpected and anticipated opportunities and, you know, And you know, no, don't fret about that if, you know, the best plans don't get realized, but some new opportunities get realized. This, this is, I think, what we have learned from this past year. I'm going to ask Bill to say a few things specific about LSTA planning for those who are new to this, maybe two minutes, Bill?
Okay. The legislation that establishes the Library Services and Technology Act requires that every five years, each of the states that receives funds that through a grant called Grants to States, that million dollars that Annie was talking about before. Each state needs to do an independent evaluation of how they've spent money the previous five years. There are a couple of real oddities to that. One is that the timing that is listed for the plans means that really only three years of the five-year period have been completed by the time you're doing the evaluation. So we're doing a five-year evaluation that really looks at three years of information and data. Also required is a new five-year plan. And so the evaluation for this past period will be due in March, next March, March of 22. And a new plan for the coming five years will be due in June of 2022. So that's the timeframe that we're working on. One of the things that Delaware does and Delaware does exceptionally well is they integrate their LSTA funding and their LSTA planning along with their overall planning and the work that they do with state dollars and dollars that come from foundations or businesses or anywhere else that they receive finances. And so as we kind of delve into looking at what we want to do in the next five years. We're really saying, let's not just look at the federal dollars. Let's look at all sources of money. And in fact, let's not worry too much about where the dollars will come from. Really, let's look at what we think is most important and what will be most transformational for libraries. What is it that the state and Delaware Division of Libraries can do? What is it that your library could do better if certain kinds of resources or certain kinds of support were provided? So let's take that longer view, that bigger view and try to come up with a framework that will serve us well over a period of time.
So we are just now at the beginning of that planning process. And I want to reassure everybody that it will come back to you. This is not going to be just the only opportunity. We'll be talking to you. We'll be coming back to you, learning from your experiences over the past year and the last three years. And also, you know, reinventing sort of fleshing out the vision over the next 10 years. So, but we're, we're going to start dreaming a little bit today. And we have collaborated with all the Delaware Division of Library staff in setting up this framework of interacting with you today, dreaming about the future. And you've heard enough about this overall statewide planning, the emphasis on the literacy dashboard. But, you know, I want to take a step back and give you a set of five questions. You will be discussing in breakout groups. So the questions that will help you brainstorm by hope and come up with ideas about dreaming for the future of Delaware libraries. Have to do some of them with customer, what steps can Delaware libraries take to encourage more residents to use existing library services offered? Some of them have to do with products and services. What are new emerging products or services that Delaware libraries should consider offering? How can Delaware libraries improve efficiency and effectiveness in serving Delawareans? How can Delaware libraries ensure that they provide the best trained, most highly qualified customer oriented staff? And are there ways to improve the structure or ways of doing business to increase the benefits that libraries and Delawareans enjoy? So as we go into the breakout sessions, keep those questions in mind. You're going to actually, you're going to have a facilitator in the session. This is, oops, I missed, and one more. How can Delaware libraries improve efficiency and effectiveness? I did have a repeat there. So as, as you have these questions in mind, we're going to break out into small groups. And the first breakout is going to last about 20 minutes. But we are going to have a little bit of a switch there in the middle of that 20-minute conversation. And the facilitator, who's going to coordinate your group, is going to guide you to a different document that shows the conversation a parallel group had during the first 10 minutes. So we're going to do a little bit of a shift there in the middle of that first 20-minute breakout. We're going to come back and regroup as a large group for five minutes. This will give the opportunity to Serena to create new breakout groups. And the round two breakout is going to last only 10 minutes. And in that round, you'll be with a different group of people. And for all of this to work, you will all have access to, let me stop sharing here. And I'm going to put some things for you in the, in the chat. This is the large group chat. I'm going to put those questions I was reading.
And the questions will, you'll have access to those questions as well. What we really want from you is ideas. We hope that the technology gods will treat us well as we enter into this. We're trying something different and new with such a large group. But the important thing is that everyone share their thoughts and their ideas about how libraries will improve. There's going to be a feedback loop on this stuff so that you'll be seeing what the whole group says. Not today, but at some point in the not-too-distant future. And you'll have an opportunity to react to that, to add to that, to change some ideas as things develop.
So we are going to break into groups and the facilitator is going to paste a Google Doc link in the chat. You can actually follow the notes in the, in the Google Doc while you're talking and conversing. So having, so there is, Bill is drinking coffee. Yeah, I get another sip of coffee. I think Serena, we are ready to break into groups.